Alright.
Yeah, maybe.
I will unmute you. I can find you on here.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, we will be scanning with the Pledge of Allegiance here in the municipal area. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska, Department of Public Health. The city of Seward provides for Nebraska to conduct its business. They copy the Nebraska to the means active to split up their north wall of its main room facility as required. Disclosure of the recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign sheet is available for use by citizens, just a council. Obviously, we don't have anyone in the room here, so you'll have to, uh, for citizens, I don't think we take any public comment because we don't have any public hearings. But of course, the, um, councilors, the city attorney and others are welcome. Present your approach, number nine.
Not, not either?
We did not update anything, apparently, the disclosure. Uh, let's see here, we, we see there's a right to address whatever items are listed that are necessary and may like to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the local.
Alright, I'm just gonna work through my list here. Schmidt?
Yes.
Miller? Singleton?
Yeah.
Uh, Wilkin?
Yep.
Beck?
Beck.
Coulterman? Yeah, I gotta unmute you, hold on. Coulterman?
Is it?
Working my way through here. Hendricks?
Yep.
Oh, and Camper?
Affirmative.
I believe we got everyone.
Okay. The first item this evening is administrative item number one. Is it the second reading of the ordinance annexing Walmart subdivision, North Edition, lots two and three to the city of Seward? Do I have that?
We do have the ordinance here. Can we grab that?
This is an ordinance declaring the annexation of certain contiguous and adjacent tracts of land, urban, suburban and character. More specifically, lots two and three Walmart subdivision, North Edition, the city of Seward, to the corporate limits of the city of Seward, Nebraska, and extending the limits there accordingly. Describe the real estate to be annexed and its boundaries to provide publication of this ordinance in parent form to provide for a time this ordinance shall take effect. As I said, this is the second reading of the ordinance.
Mayor, we're getting reports of a lot of echo. So it's probably you and I. Are you plugged in right now?
Yes.
Okay. I got, I think I have enough battery. I can probably move, uh, from here. Uh...
It almost sounds like he's too far away from his mic from his computer.
I am? Okay.
Uh, then we'll go on to item number two. This is the resolution suspending till the late fees disconnects and disconnect fees until May thirty-first, twenty-twenty, as related to the COVID-nineteen coronavirus. Greg, do you wanna pick the head then?
Yep. I'm gonna mute the mayor. See if that, let me know how the audio sounds here, uh, now, as I'm on the spotlight video.
You're good.
Okay, I, it's probably the echo that's going on in the room, so, um, we don't have a whole lot of meeting left and I don't, so we'll just kinda bear with it for today and then we'll try to, as we continue to move through meetings, uh, move on from that. Uh, the resolution, uh, that was provided to you in your packet is essentially going on with the response, uh, that we've seen in regards to COVID-nineteen across the state. Uh, we've got a lot of questions and so we put together a package here in the dating that you see. And what will happen is after this resolution, if it should be approved by the council tonight, um, starting tomorrow with tomorrow's shut offs, we will not disconnect anyone. Um, also, we will not be charging any of the disconnect fees that are normally associated with disconnects. So when you do turn back on, there's usually a twenty-five dollar fee and if it's also done at the time associated with off-peak or off-regular hours, we have to call somebody out and turn that back on, uh, there's additional fees. All those fees will be waived, uh, at this time up through May thirty-first, which is also the date we're predominantly seeing with other utilities. Additionally, any late fees that occur on this next billing cycle, we're completing the billing cycle today and tomorrow. So then the late fees incurred on the next billing cycle moving forward, uh, those late fees will also be waived, uh, through May thirty-first. We'll probably revisit this, uh, and bring it back to your attention as we get closer to that May thirty-first date, uh, and see what the status of, uh, the situation is regarding to billing. But, uh, we're seeing this throughout every power district, all wholesale and suppliers and customers, LES. I was on the phone today with Butler Public Power, uh, Municipal Power Beatrice, everyone is doing this. Um, there's gonna, we're already seeing layoffs in our own community, uh, where people are, are calling and questioning what the status of this is. And we said, we cannot guarantee, but this is the policy that's coming before the council tonight. And so, uh, I can answer any questions you have. Um, if you're muted and you wanna ask a question, either wave at me or, or let me know in the chat and then we can go from there.
Hey, Greg?
Yes?
Greg, these are waived, not just delayed fees, correct? Delayed fees?
All of the fees will be removed. So the fees that were incurred prior to this on the billing that, you know, was buil- billed out to you weeks ago, those late fees won't be waived. Hopefully, they'll all be paid through today. But this next billing cycle that will go out, all late fees will be waived. They won't ever have to pay them in the future. They're gone.
Great.
The biggest thing also, if you note in there, is that we're gonna work, we're gonna try and make payment arrangements. Because as you well know, this is gonna snowball. If you can't pay two hundred bucks this month for your utilities without late fees and you go another month and you're in dire straits, now you have four hundred dollars. And so we're gonna encourage payments. If people can pay a quarter of it a week, half of it now, whatever we can try and work out with them, just to make sure things continue to move, um, and so they don't get too far behind.
Thanks.
John, John asked if we will get something from, you know, the federal declaration of emergency or anything like that? Is there anything that credits this back to us?
We're not sure, again, if we're not actually marking the fees and, and that will be an administrative element. Um, then, I don't know at this time. We're marking everything. Uh, the mayor did declare an emergency on Friday. And so that resolution was sent off to Gary Peterson, the county emergency manager in NEMA today. And so they have that in their hands. Um, and so we'll work with them. We're still trying to identify what cost, um, and, and things that are associated with our response to the pandemic will be reimbursable. And, and Gary's kind of said, well, anything you can possibly think of, keep track of at this point and then it'll be sorted out in the laundry later.
And then the other question I have is just volume. I mean, do you have any sense of how many families you think would be impa- impacted by this?
Ultimately, right now, we're not anticip-, we've only had one where we know of. Someone has called us and said, I was laid off. I will not be able to pay my current billing before disconnect. Um, and I was laid off due to COVID- COVID-nineteen. And so, uh, we do have one that for sure is monitoring what we do.
Greg, is everybody current with NIMs or FEMA credits?
Don't worry, Wilkin, I muted ya. Oh, the fun of video con-
This is a wonderful community meeting.
It is. This is, this is what community is all about. Go ahead, Councilman Singleton.
Did, are we, is everyone current with NIMs till we get the FEMA credit?
Uh, we still get the FEMA credits whether our NIMs is up to date or not. They've never questioned that in regards to it. Um, so we try to work through that, but that's not a definitive element of, of reimbursement. We've received reimbursement already on a number of projects back from the flood from a year ago. We try to encourage NIMs because it is one of the more efficient ways to teach employees how to undertake the process and to document, uh, and work through the emergency protocols. Um, but again, with changes in, in, since Hurricane Sandy and other elements, it's a constantly moving target to properly identify, uh, and how they want you to categorize, um, emergency costs. The biggest one is they're asking everybody to get on the portal, whether you're the county, the city, the school district, hospital, for-profit, or not for-profit, but nonprofit, uh, elderly care. They're trying to get everybody lined up for the, uh, the grants portal, which is the system I use right now to work through all my projects for the flood. So that's the biggest one, is they wanna make sure that you understand how that system works.
And Greg, anybody who's already received a disconnect notice will not be disconnected?
That is correct, Councilman Schmidt. Uh, anyone that has a disconnect currently sitting there, we will not disconnect you tomorrow. Tomorrow is actually the day that disconnects start, um, and we will not, obviously, that's an assumption on what the council does tonight. But should this resolution be passed, uh, we will not be doing any disconnects through May thirty-first.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, if there are no, no other questions, I don't see any council members or Kelly waving at me or anything, um...
Introduce the resolution?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to introduce the resolution and so...
I'll, I'll make that motion.
That was moved by Councilmember Coulterman?
That's all, it just, it just the one person?
Okay, it's just one? There's no second on that mo- on the motion to move? I'm gonna unmute the mayor, so get ready for, uh, echo a palooza.
Can you mute yours?
I will mute mine, hold on here.
Okay, can you hear me? Alright. Uh, so the resolution has been introduced and it does it as resolution number twenty-two-dash-twenty-two. Would anyone like to move that this resolution should pass and is out? We have a motion and a second?
Let's see, moved by, I'm working through my paperwork here. Moved by Schmidt, seconded by...
Ted.
Camper? We're gonna go ahead and just do the, well, everybody's muted, so we'll walk through them real quick. We're gonna, I'm gonna do a roll, a roll call vote here. Schmidt?
Yes.
Takes a second here. It's not letting, oh, there we go, Miller?
Yep.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
I believe we got everyone.
You want to do a report?
Eight, eight yays, no nays. Yeah, I can do a report. Alright, I'm gonna jaunt back here. I got the mayor on mute, okay. Uh, I'm gonna give a report, just, uh, the administrator's report on the update of our response to COVID-nineteen. Uh, as you're aware, we, uh, closed public access to all city facilities, um, and limited hours in regards to, for instance, at the library currently, we're continuing to utilize the drive-through. We've shrunk those hours based on usage. Uh, we're still seeing really good usage out of that though. Uh, a lot of community members picking up a number of books. Uh, and it actually takes quite a while to process those, uh, through with the people in the drive-through, upwards of ten to fifteen minutes sometimes. So, I'm gonna nab. Gotcha again, John. Um, and so we're continuing to see that. Katrina at the Senior Center continues to serve meals. She's had upwards of fifteen, twenty meals a day that they're serving, uh, via delivery, uh, or drive-up at the Senior Center. And so we continue to work on that, the Senior Center level. And then, as of today, the last one I wanted to update you on and kinda get some feedback is in regards to, somebody's got a squeaky chair. It says it, okay, I wanna mute you, Sid. There you go. Uh, sorry. Uh, the, the last one I wanna update you on is, um, we had a command team meeting. Those that serve on the command team is a team that's made up of different entities within the Four Corners Health Division. And so Butler County, York County, Seward County, and the other county, I forget at the top of my, off top of my head. But those counties that make up the, the Four Corners Health, uh, we meet with Laura about every two days and get an update. Roger Reamer from Memorial Healthcare Systems is on that call. Uh, sometimes Josh Fields with the School District, re- Gary Peterson with Emergency Management, um, and a number of elected officials. I know, um, Mayor Kelly from Milford's on there as well, a lot of our smaller communities. And we just discuss what the status of the day is in regards to quarantines, in regards to the number of people being observed. Um, the number of cases that we have a positive COVID-nineteen, uh, test, which at the time of last night at four o'clock in the Four Corner Health area, there were none. We had no diagnosed cases, uh, or tested positive cases in the Four Corners Health District. And so that continues to be good for us. But we continue to prepare and we hear about, uh, what the hospital's doing in regards to their preparations, uh, York Hospital and their preparations. And so it's a good team of people to kind of get together and discuss items. Um, we continue to see the quarantine number go up. And so these are people that are either returning from some of the areas that are of concern, uh, or these are people that are showing symptoms or signs or came into contact with somebody that was a positive, uh, verified test of COVID-nineteen. And so, um, those numbers continue to rise, not significantly, I think in the Four Corners area where I approximately, um, a hundred and forty-four, I believe, is what I noted last night. Let me check my notes from our meeting. Hundred and fourteen, hundred and forty in quarantine, uh, an additional eleven being monitored. Um, they have been testing a few individuals. I think they had, uh, fifteen negative tests of COVID-nineteen. So people that actually went through the protocol and, um, they actually got them all the way through the protocol, which includes checking them for influenza, different cold spectrum, uh, elements. And then finally, if they still need to be verified, then they give them the COVID-nineteen test. Uh, but very limited availability for that test and I think you're hearing that across the state. Um, and so we continue to work through that. Um, they continue to prepare just in the event that there is, uh, a larger surge. I know you've heard that word used a lot lately, but they continue to work in the healthcare system to, uh, anticipate and have preparations in regards to if there was a surge of additional patients coming in. Um, we worked with some of our largest employers lately, uh, specifically Tenneco and Hughes Brothers along with Pet Source Schuler to begin the process for classification. It's a self-classification, but begin that process to deem them, um, critical infrastructure. And so should we see some sort of health mandate come down, uh, with a shelter in place or something else like that? Uh, this is a designation that comes down by guidance from Homeland Security, uh, to note that these are critical infrastructure elements. Uh, Hughes Brothers creating utility systems for the electrical utility systems across the nation and worldwide. And also, uh, Tenneco, Tenneco in regards to their supply chain to agriculture. Not so much the big three and a lot of the work they do at Tenneco for, uh, the big three automakers, but more the caterpillars and the John Deere's and, and the supply elements that they provide. They received notification from those two companies that they need to continue to receive supply to get agricultural implements out the door. And so Tenneco is, uh, underneath that, that guise of agriculture. Uh, and so I worked with Wendy and Chantel at both of those institutions, along with the work that's being done in regards to, uh, Pet Source. Um, pet food is actually deemed an agricultural product as well and, and listed on the list from Homeland Security. So they continue to work and build up that, uh, facility down there. And I've worked closely with Amy and Clayton with the great engineering team. Uh, they have a great rotation down there. They have a lot of protocols in place, um, far less people on site to try and make sure that they're social distancing and doing the things that they need to do to keep the operations running, try to keep them as best on schedule as they can, but be mindful of the current pandemic situation. So, uh, working closely with those three entities as of late. Um, as noted before, the mayor signed a declaration last Friday, I believe, March twentieth, uh, declaring a state of emergency here in the city of Seward. That was under the recommendation of Gary Peterson, Emergency Manager, number of other communities in the county have done that as well recently. And that's just to help secure potential federal funding in the future, similar to what we did with the flood. Um, so we've moved through that and sent that off to the state. And so, leading out of that discussion from the command team last night, I kinda heard that the utilities across the region have also started moving into their next level of protocol. And that next level of protocol is to start dividing essential, uh, critical elements of our city systems up to ensure that they can keep running as we continue through the pandemic process. And what I mean by that is, one of the protocols we have in place in our pandemic plan is to split up, for instance, the electrical utility crews. And now they will, starting tomorrow, uh, they will be separated and one crew will wo- work on full-time out of the facility for a number of days while the other crew is working, uh, essentially from home. They will have trucks and computers a- and the, the, the information and equipment they need on-site with them. And then they can be called out at any time during normal hours and if they're on call. And they can do one call locates, they can take care of small level outages, check meters, but do things where they don't come into any contact other than telephonically with the other half of the crew and then they'll switch. Um, the wastewater and water treatment group will begin to separate themselves. One will be completely housed out of the wastewater treatment plant and then the other half of the crew now will be out at the reverse osmosis treatment plant, which we don't normally use as a home base, but there are offices and facilities, phones and other things out there. So they'll split themselves, they won't come into contact with each other anymore either, uh, for this foreseeable future. And the reason being is that if we do have an infection, we have a quarantine situation, that doesn't take the entire department out of whack or out of commission for two weeks. Uh, it takes half of them down and then we hope we can work with the other ones, uh, to get through that. The other element of that backup is also that we've contacted our partners like Butler Public Power, Norris Public Power, other municipalities like York who operate a water or wastewater treatment facility and let them know that we're available to help them should they have a major issue and they're kind of our backup as well. That if we got in a situation where we really needed some assistance, uh, large-scale outage, um, if we had a storm system come through or anything else like that, we're just aware that we're here to help each other. And so that's, that's what we're gonna do on that element. Uh, well, also, a critical part of our process is gonna be utility billing and so City Hall. And so we're trying to work through the process to figure out how we're gonna, uh, work through, um, utility billing and make sure that we, we have two crews that are working out of City Hall to ensure that we don't have all of our functions shut down and we're unable to take billing over the phone or credit card billing or anything else because everybody's on quarantine. And so we'll work through that process and, and then, and work with our staff there at City Hall. And you'll probably see some working on call it up from home for a few days and then there'll be a rotation. Um, but we're working through that right now and that's the protocol we will go to for the foreseeable future. Um, the other elements of our, our teams, public properties, street department, um, they can be, uh, separated out themselves. Um, and for the most part, not specifically critical in regards to an essential element. Yes, we gotta keep sweeping the streets. Uh, if we have a storm, we need to make sure that we can pick up trees or if we have a tree go down or something like that. But very limited in scope compared to what else we may be required to do. Again, uh, this is also planning for a shelter-in-place order. So, at this time, are there any council members that have any questions on kind of some of the things we'll do? And a few of you are muted, so if you are, wave at me or, or poke me on chat.
Hey, Greg, I got a couple things. So when you were, uh, throwing out the numbers related to, uh, cases and testing and you mentioned quarantine, how, how is quarantine being reported? Are, are people self-reporting, calling in and saying, hey, I broke myself into quarantine? Or where does that number come from?
Those numbers are reported ones. So those are ones that were reported for Corners Health Department. Um, these are people, as you may have heard from the governor today, they want people to report if they were in some of these hot zones, we'll call them. Um, we had one, uh, employee return from Europe who is on quarantine and that was reported to Four Corners Health. And so these are people that have self-reported or reported through a diagnosis, um, and been reported to Four Corners Health. I'm sure there are people out there that heard that they may have come in contact, like a bad game of telephone possibly even, that, you know, they knew Suzie Q at Dairy Queen who knew Joe Bob at, uh, the gas station who once went to Lincoln two years ago, that possibly might have had coronavirus and so they're quarantining themselves. Those people aren't included. These are people that were, uh, reported to the Health Department. Um, and they're monitoring them and then following up with them as they go through that process. Uh, and so, um, that, that's where we're at with quarantine. Uh, I did get a, a question on, on the, on the chat to me. Um, what protocols are in place in Seward if people think they have symptoms? What I would say is, is contact your health professional. Um, if you think you have, if somebody's out there listening, if you think you have symptoms, call your doctor, call your healthcare provider and they will walk you through a protocol where they will guide you on what to do. And, and that's probably the best starting point. Um, Four Corners Health is also a resource for that. Uh, don't go directly to the ER. Call, there are procedures and policies in place, both at the clinics, at the hospital and other local clinics. Um, and so call in first and they'll walk you through the procedures and the questions that are important to try and figure out what your next steps are, as long as you're not critical. If you're having a critical health issue, you may need to go in. Uh, but the first thing you, you should do, if you can, is, uh, call in, go through the question protocols. We're also doing that with, I believe, and I know Councilman Singleton's on the phone, but we've instructed, uh, E-nine-one-one, the nine-one-one, local nine-one-one system, for any call that we're having EMS report to or anything else to ask those questions. Uh, so our EMS guys, our fire guys show up, the volunteer fire crew. We're gonna get questions of, we have a person that tripped and fell and maybe broke their leg. Well, we're gonna ask them these other protocol questions to make sure the person we're dealing with also isn't dealing with some symptoms that may be related to a COVID-nineteen case. And if they meet these criteria, our EMS response is gonna be different. And so, uh, they're, they're working through that with E-nine-one-one. Um, but we wanna make sure that that process is clear to people, that it really is about calling in, getting some questions answered, diagnosis through Memorial Healthcare System or your, your healthcare provider.
And Greg, what, uh, what's our, our procedure? Maybe, maybe you rattle it off and I was scribbling a bunch of notes here and I missed it. So obviously, you're dividing up A-team, B-team, splitting, uh, departments up, which is great and, and what should be done? If someone from one of those teams comes down with symptoms or we're quarantining everybody from that team?
We'll file, we'll provide the information to Four Corners Health. I have a direct access to Laura, the executive director who leads all of their efforts. We'll provide that information as soon as we have it to Four Corners Health and we'll go under whatever directive they give us. Our, they are essentially the leader of our pandemic process.
Thanks.
Um, I'm gonna just kinda cycle through if anybody waves at me or says anything on the council. Um, I think I hear Councilman Singleton?
Yeah.
Yeah. So does everybody understand with the fire department on how we're gonna respond? We will be purple gowns just like a surgical person. We'll be N ninety five, we'll be a surgical gown. We uh will be taken with the precautions with the goggles, special safety glasses. So everybody knows that. And then we have two squads that are separated. One is for normal calls. One squad is just just for a call with blue light systems that we would possibly go on. But we would to destroy or have to potentially throw in the mark supplies. Just kind of a heads up.
Yep. And as Councilman uh Singleton noted, they have an entire other ambulance unit that they've converted over. Uh just for responding to potential COVID nineteen cases or symptoms. Uh and so they they built that up and designed it in a way that it can be easily cleaned, disinfected, sanitized and maintained. Uh and separate from the unit where they're just taking the kid that, you know, broke his arm at the ballgame in. And so. Uh they've done a great job of that and and so they continue to work on their protocols and I have made myself available to. Uh Chief Kim Zee and Assistant Chief Brum uh to provide any other administrative level. I I sent that out to them again today. Uh assistance that they need as we continue to move through this. Um and so we'll just continue to monitor the situation, have good communication. But that's what we're doing right now here in the city. Uh if we do have a shelter in place, we likely will fully shut down the library. Uh and then we would probably look at those critical ser- or non-critical services like Parks Department, Recreation Streets. Uh we would likely have them stay home other than, you know, safety issues. Like if we have a tree go down or something, we'll have them report and respond. But we're just letting everybody know. We don't, we don't know anything more than what you guys do in regards to anything that's coming down the pipeline. Um we saw the first case, I think if you saw the news tonight, the first case of community spread in Lincoln. And with our commuting population, we wanna be very mindful of that. Uh with with such a large portion of our population going back and forth between the city of Seward and Lincoln. Um that uh this this kinda leads to the possibility that we could have it here. So we wanna be well prepared.
Greg, a question?
I I.
How many, I asked the question on chat, but how many are self-quarantined that that you know of?
We we don't know. I don't know in regards to that hundred and forty quarantine number that received from Laura. Um I don't know how many of those are doctored, ordered, health department ordered, or just self-quarantined when they're self-reporting. Uh for instance, our our employee that came back knew that the restrictions were out there and the requirements to quarantine if he came back from Europe. And so that was a self-reported one. But these are all ones that have checked in with Four Corners Health. And are being monitored and and providing information to Four Corners Health. So again, there may be others out there that are self-quarantining themselves. Just because they don't feel well. Um they may have come across, you know, we solved the thing with Emeritus, Emeritus to shut down. You know, maybe there's somebody in our community that, you know, stopped by Emeritus for twenty minutes during that time and now they're self-quarantining, but they're not reporting it. We just don't know. So the one forty, again, as of last night at four o'clock. Uh that is a number that was reported to and is being observed by uh Four Corners Health.
Greg, you mentioned shelter in place. What's the criteria for going to shelter in place? How likely are we to do that in reserve at time period?
Uh I don't wanna, I don't wanna make any assumptions about how likely we are. I don't wanna cause panic. Um I would continue to monitor the situation in Lincoln. That's probably the best advice I can give. Um in regards to looking at what may be coming down the line. And so as Lincoln goes. Shortly thereafter, potentially, you're gonna see uh counties like Gage County, Seward County, York County. Um uh trying to think of. So Celine County with with Crete down there. Crete's had a a number of reports already. I think some Dome students. Have reported positive or tested positive. Um that's gonna make a big difference. The other one a- a- and read up on this, I don't wanna give out too much. Information cuz I've been just been really busy with other items related to this today, is that they've started noting these um presumptive positives. That's an important thing to understand, is these are doctor-designated cases where they've tested them for other items. Like influenza, the cold spectrum, and they're not giving them a definitive COVID nineteen test. They're saying, you don't have any of these other things that possibly could be. You show all the signs of COVID nineteen. We're presuming you have it. Go quarantine yourself for fourteen days. Some of the things that are going on with that and and Lincoln is example of this, is that I think those are not being tracked or reported in the numbers. So and and so that that's an important element to be noted and us on the preparation side. That if they're not gonna note those in the numbers and not do the tracking that you normally see with these COVID nineteen test positives. Where they're tracking where they went and they're uh reporting that to the public. Maybe if you were at McDonald's on Fourteenth and O Street or whatever it is at this exact time, they're not reporting those things. And I think you're gonna continue to see more and more of that because there's just gonna be too many of them and the testing ability is very limited. Um and they're also prioritizing those tests for critical infrastructure, specifically doctors, nurses. Medical professionals, uh emergency responders. They're the ones that are coming into contact with definitive COVID nineteen patients. And they're trying to monitor them and if they are showing any signs of of infection, they're testing them. Cuz they need to know if they need to pull them out of the medical uh stream. And so those are probably some of them that are eating up some of the test capabilities cuz they're trying to make sure they have healthy doctors in there. Cuz the last thing anyone is a doctor that's just infecting everybody that comes in the door uh that may not even have it. And so that's. That's a big limitation for us. Other questions from council members, I'm kind of cycling through my list here, seeing if.
So Greg?
Yes, Councilman Singleton?
When we get our, say we get our first positive test, are you going to let us know right away?
Absolutely, yes. Four Corners Health will inform us. Um that, most likely though, Four Corners Health is gonna let us know that that's a test positive. Um again, if we get a presumptive case or diagnosed case, I don't know that we'll know. And that's, that's the question of, you know, the overload of the testing system. I know they're trying to build up test capability in the state. To be able to test more. Uh and the governor's working really hard with the Department of Health and and UNMC and other. Uh private firms that are doing testing, but the capabilities are limited. And uh these these doctors need to make a medical professional opinion quickly and sort out what these people need to do. And so that's the presumptive positive. Um I'll be interested also to see what comes out of uh yesterday, as you may know, and probably continuing today. Brian in Lincoln was doing the drive-through testing. Um and so they had a number of tests. That were undertaken, but sometimes it can take days to get the final response under under the current protocols for testing COVID nineteen. So you may see Lincoln have a little bit of a blip or a jump here once they test all of those. Uh people that went through the drive-through. Again, the drive-through ones is not like a McDonald's drive-through. You don't think you have COVID nineteen in drive-through. It is, these are people that are specifically being sent there by a healthcare professional. Uh in informing uh those people in the drive-through that these people are coming because they wanna verify something. And so this is not just a general public drive-through.
Greg, do you have a question? We have any idea how many people went through that, Greg?
I don't know. I think the number I heard yesterday was potentially fifty-four.
I thought it was right around fifty, yeah.
I I heard it was right around fifty to fifty-four. Uh I think there was a a litany of tests that were also done. I don't think it. Some of those may not have just been COVID nineteen tests. Um they may have also done some spectrum tests for cold and influenza at the same time. Um just to eliminate those possibilities. But about fifty yesterday, I don't know what their capabilities are when they're fully active and working all day. Again, they're gonna be limited by the test facilities. There's no point in running hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people through a drive-through. When you can only process two hundred a day.
So Greg, the next question is, if one of our employees come down with positive, will our insurance cover them under worker comp?
Uh I don't wanna go too far into an analysis of that right now. I will say that Bonnie, myself. Uh Jerry Pigsley, our labor attorney, um and anyone that's involved in our health insurance will obviously rope in on that. Uh but there's been so much activity at the federal level in regards to legislation that was just passed this week and we're still processing through that. Uh a number of changes to the Family Medical Leave Act. Uh has been put in place in relation to this coming effective April first. Also, um paid time off. Uh which will affect all employers, but an additional eighty hours of paid time off specific to COVID nineteen related items. And that's not just if you're infected or quarantined. It also relates to uh school shutdowns and other elements of that for childcare and things. And so we're still processing through that. Uh but um even talking to Jerry Pigsley today, which that's predominantly all he does. He said there's still a lot of stuff that the Department of Labor at the federal level is processing through and giving advice on. Cuz this is happening really, really quick and we're kinda getting uh barnstormed in regards to. Uh different things that we're hearing. They're emailed to us, sent out from different organizations and associations. And so we continue to work through all that and make sure that we're uh consulting with Jerry when we have questions. But there there's precautions being put in place. Uh we were just having a discussion today about. How uh unemployment will relate to COVID nineteen cases with reduction of hours or layoffs, so.
Yeah, because the big question could come up, Greg, whether whatever emergency person tells, whether it's police or our EMS. They're going on a call, are we gonna support them if they come down positive?
Support them in regards to workers' compensation, is that what you're?
Yeah, you know, because if they're going on a call and then they can't work because they're supporting the city on a call.
Yep.
What are we gonna do to aid them?
Yep, and we'll just do our normal filings uh through um Seward and Lick D and everything that we would normally do. For any infection uh that EMS or police were involved in or injury or accident. That's how we will respond and uh there may be special coverages actually, once we process our way through the federal legislation. There may be special coverages to assist the city so we don't take such a large hit either. Um on our workers' comp and things like that. But we won't know that for days, if not weeks, as we process through uh the Department of Labor items. And Kelly's leaning really far forward. Kelly, do you wanna say something? Nope, oh, I'm gonna unmute him. Hold on, hold on. I gotta unmute you. Try again, Kelly. There we go.
You're you're absolutely right. It's just too soon to tell. There's just so many things in play right now. It's so very fluid that. Uh we just don't have any definitive answer on all of this federal legislation, so stay tuned.
Thanks, Kelly. All right, I'm gonna mute you ahead. Any other council members have questions in regards to the uh city of Seward's response to COVID nineteen and the pro- protocols and procedures we're undertaking right now?
No, Greg, I guess finally comment. I mean, as you get info from uh Four Corners. I don't wanna put more work on your plate, but it'd be nice for that that update to be pushed out to us so we know what's going on.
Cap.
You know, my 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 biggest concern is, and I know it's gonna come down to exactly what the situation is. Um you know, somebody goes home sick, not feeling well. You know, how long are we gonna let people? I mean, we had this discussion here at the bank today. How long are we gonna let people hang around with each other? Not knowing exactly what the illness is that somebody went home for, you know? Could be a common cold, it could be anything, but how long are we gonna let people to continue to interact? Uh before we say, you know what, if we we need to limit things, distance people even more. And uh you know, shrink our teams here until we know exactly what's going on. So I'm just, I'm just curious uh. What Four Corners has to say about that? You know, at what point, you know, it goes back to my other question, you know, you have a team working together over. Uh in the electric department and one of them is sick, we don't know what it is. Are you going to let the other three continue to work together or whatever number it is? Are you gonna make them all quarantine until you know, hey, it's nothing, come on back?
Uh under the current system, we'll continue to monitor it and likely, unless they're showing like every sign. Like it's just readily obvious that they're coming down quickly with a COVID nineteen case. Uh we're gonna have them immediately work through with Memorial Healthcare or their healthcare professional through the process that's currently in place. Uh if we get a positive back, everyone that interacted with them is going on quarantine. And and that's why we're doing that spacing. We can quarantine the other two members of their crew and we have a whole half another crew fully available and they're completely separate. So that's why it's really important. The other one that I know Four Corners, the governor would reiterate, is this social distancing thing, especially in the workplace. And things like that is really not like a silly matter. It's it's really something that they continue to focus on. Um because of the particulates and the way that we interact with each other and how this is transferred. Um between that and and just good hygiene, cleanup procedures, wiping items down that are regularly used, phones, countertops, all that stuff. It it really is important. And so we'll continue to do that. I think the next level you would see is what you're gonna see in Lincoln that just starts tomorrow morning, which is the ten-person limit. And the uh interactions within a workplace where you have closely associated personal contacts. Those will officially be mandated by, uh at this point, it'd either be the state or Four Corners Health as our health department. But those will be mandated, then they can be legally enforced. And that's what's happening in Lincoln tomorrow morning. So. If you have more than ten people in in a specific area, you can be closed down by the health department or. Uh cited by the police department in Lincoln, potentially.
That won't apply to, that doesn't employ, apply to a critical employees or critical infrastructure.
It doesn't apply, but the one thing that they will say and Four Corners Health reiterated this is you have to continue. To show how you are working through social distancing and other things to limit. Cuz again, if if a large industry, and I told this to Tenneco Hughes Brothers, if they became a hotbed for infection, they're getting shut down. Health department's coming in, they're shutting them down. And you can say you're critical whatever, but as as that becomes a localized epidemic. Within that facility, they're gonna shut them down. Um but I think that next step is gonna be. Uh a health mandate on the ten-person rule. Again, the other element of that in Lincoln that starts tomorrow is things like haircuts. Tattooing, anything where you're having uh nail salons and stuff, all of that has to close down. Um in Lincoln, I believe also bars and restaurants, maybe, I I can't remember all the stuff I saw, but bars and restaurants will no longer have. Uh serving areas at all. And so it will only be to go uh and pick up orders. That would be the next step. And then after that, you're most likely going into shelter in place.
And and Greg, do we have the ability at all for, I mean, the monitoring of systems remotely? Rather than on, having to be onsite?
Absolutely. We have those uh in the water wastewater system and the electric system. Uh we have what we call our SCADA systems. And there's somebody on call twenty-four seven that's monitoring that. Uh they're getting pinged when we have an emergency, something shuts off, something faults. Uh outages, whatever it may be, that system calls out to the person on call or the monitoring person. Uh and we've always had that system in place for for years and years now. And so that's a big element of what we do. We'll continue to do that. Um again, the good part being that hopefully on the small scale stuff, people can report and fix whatever issues they are individually. And not have to bring the whole crew together to to take care of a matter.
And has uh Four Corners or Roger or anybody discussed a major outbreak? We need more uh facilities to take care of the sick and where they're, what they're gonna use?
We haven't specifically discussed it. Uh items have been thrown around. I don't wanna commit anybody. Um but they've talked to different areas uh and facilities across the region. In regards to where we could house people if we ran out of bed space. And we needed to have quarantine space or other treatment space. And so they are working on it. They're very familiar with it. Um I think one of the things I'll do, Councilman Schmidt, that you talked about is kinda pushing this on is. I will go and forward the minutes from that command team meeting that took place yesterday. I'll forward that on to you guys. So you can kind of review that. The next meeting is on uh Friday at four PM. And so we traditionally meet every two days or so at four in a Zoom meeting. And so once we get meetings, minutes from those. I'll forward that on to you. Uh if you have anything that you'd like me to ask on behalf of the council or the city of Seward, just let me know. Uh if you have anything that you'd like me to ask on behalf of the council or the city of Seward, just let me know. And I can get uh good, pretty good access to everybody on that call and other communities, so if there is something, just push that my way. And I'll try to get an answer for you uh on Friday at four. Any other council members have anything else?
Is there a motion to accept the report?
Seeing none, the mayor's asked me if there is a motion to accept the report. Uh I'm, I'm gonna go with Beck. Is there a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
And Coulterman second. Uh and we will uh, we might need to go back to the all-in-favor say aye, but we'll run through this. We'll go with the roll call vote. Schmidt?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Go unmute Wilkin. Wilkin?
Yep.
Beck? Singleton?
Yeah.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Let's see, I'm gonna do some more unmuting here. Campera?
Yes.
And Hendricks?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Um with that, I'm gonna turn it back. I'm gonna mute myself and I'm gonna turn it back over. On the last one, we're just gonna go in all with the favor say aye. But I'll turn it back over to the mayor for any last minute, oh, any last minute comments here, but we're gonna turn it back over to uh the mayor here.
Okay, do we have any future requests?
Hold on, I gotta unmute you.
Oh. How about now?
Uh hold on.
Now?
His mouth's moving, but nothing's coming out.
Hold on, I'm working on it. Wow, he got really big.
We good?
No. This is so much fun. Uh let's see. Oh, there we go. Got him.
Okay.
All right, are there any future requests for council items or action? Nope.
Not me.
Okay. And uh I used to be supposed to, it's coming up Jonathan. Shaking his head, okay?
Okay.
Let's do a voice vote, all of us in favor to, well, I guess it's your motion to adjourn first.
Motion is second to adjourn. All of us say aye.
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 All of us say aye. Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you for your patience. We'll continue to work out the bugs on, on this process and uh. With that, have a great night.
Well done, guys. Thank you.